All right, we've got Don Carroll here for today's interview. Don, thanks so much for being here with us.
Of course, glad to be here.
Go ahead and let you introduce yourself to the audience.
Sure, so I am Don Carroll. I'm running for Capella City Council. Place three is the spot I'm running for. Just to give you a little bit of background on myself, so my wife and I moved here in oh seven. We've been here almost fourteen years. For a number of years, started getting involved with, you know, did Leadership Capella and graduated from that and then was appointed to Economic Development Committee. Got involved with that and even a decade ago started thinking, I think city council, you know, serving that type of capacity would be a great way to continue to participate in the community. However, we started putting kids on the ground, right? You started having babies and your priorities start shifting and you think, okay, well, maybe this is not the right time and, and but I continue to stay involved in economic development. And just what I learned sort of during that time is it takes a while to really understand how a community works and how a city makes plans and how they execute on those plans. And quite frankly, at times, how you have plans, but then they don't go like you think they should and you have to take a step back and you have to rethink how, you know, how you need to do something and how you need to approach it. So that just takes a lot of time. And so I was able to, you know, spend some time going through that process of just watching that, participating in that, giving my input. And then a couple of years ago, I rolled off Economic Development Committee, you know, focused more on my kid's school, sort of, you know, made that sort of the focus in the near term. And then when this year it came up, I thought, well, maybe this is the right time. Kids get a little bit older, it gets a little bit easier. They can sort of self govern themselves at least to some extent. And so you start, you start thinking, okay, maybe this is the time to sort of do it. So that's sort of how we've come to this spot.
Fantastic. All right. Well, thank you, Don. We're going to get right into the questions. So for question one, why are you running for city council and why should voters choose you over your opponents?
Sure. So, you know, piggybacking on a little bit of my intro, what I'll tell you first is a little bit of this, what I'm going to call the soft thing, sort of the motive behind it. And a lot of it has to do with flat out community service and how do we continue to make Capella be the great place it is to live? And how do, how do we continue that? And how do you get involved in being part of that effort? I'll tell you sort of a side note, one of the other things, Tiana, my wife and I both firmly believe that one of the things we have to show our three daughters is an ability to serve and a willingness to serve in the community. And that community could mean your church, it could mean your school, it could mean the city. But you need to be involved in the community in which you work. It could be just your, your neighborhoods and everything. And so, you know, part of my motive is quite frankly, being the, being an example for my, for my three daughters. My wife, Tiana, has been involved in the PTO at our elementary school and at our middle school. And so they see that already. They see us doing things with work, but they really need to see us serving in the community in which we live and with the, with the neighbors that we have. So that's part of my motive for doing it. Now furthermore, I do think I'm prepared for this type of thing because of what I mentioned earlier, I've, you know, dating back to oh nine, when I first did Leadership Capella, been involved with the community, learning about the community. I will not say making decisions about the community, but giving advice to the community through economic development. You know, spent ten years on Economic Development Committee, five different terms. I spent, you know, seven of those years as vice chair and chair. And so just becoming more and more involved, learning more and more about the community and how it works. And so I think from that standpoint, I'm prepared to, to step into a new role of service in the community. You couple that with my professional expertise. I am a twenty-five-year commercial banker with a large bank in the, in the DFW area. I am an expert, I'm a credit officer actually, so I'm an expert at financial analysis. I'm an expert in understanding, you know, when you look at budgets and when you look at revenue sources and when you look at expense infrastructure, how those are all intertwined and how you need to make adjustments. Furthermore, when you have a plan for the future, you have to have flexibility, financial flexibility involved. And so that also requires planning. Financial flexibility just doesn't happen automatically. It takes preparation and it takes, it takes planning, not just looking at the short term. So I can leverage much of the experience I have in commercial banking and financial analysis to, you'll lend some of those skills to the city also as we continue to go through some of the, some of the things we're going to have to go through here in, in the near term. So those are, those are the primary reasons I think I am a qualified candidate for this, this type of role. I really try to take to a great extent, a pragmatic approach to how I make decisions. You have so many different constituencies that you have to take into consideration. You have the residents, you have small businesses, you have the city staff, you have employees that work here, but don't live here. You have the West Side businesses. So you have to have this ability to really take in, when I make a decision to move this lever, what's it going to do to all these other levers? They're all connected somehow. And so what is the impact of this decision going to be? Sometimes I get very frustrated because government sometimes seems to move slowly. But then I take a step back and says, well, maybe that's not always a bad thing because it gives council and it gives city staff the opportunity to evaluate, how is it going to impact all the different constituencies here? So just bringing that mindset to this role along with service I've already had and my professional expertise, I think that prepares me in a lot of ways to step into this, to this role to continue to show my girls, this is, this is what we do in our community.
Fantastic. Yeah, I've, I've been living in this community pretty much my whole life. I graduated from Capella High School and I did Leadership Capella as well. I did not think it would be as fascinating as it was, but I was pleasantly surprised. It was a great program to be a part of.
It was. And I'll, and I'll just a side note, you said you grew up in Capella and everything. So you're an example of what we want for our daughters also is we want this to be a place that they decide to come back to and to continue to live here, raise their families here. And so that takes planning, prudent, you know, conservative fiscal policies today to make sure that the, the community is something they would want to come back to in the future. So it's, it's great hearing that you've, you've come back here and I love hearing stories like that.
Oh, I love it. Yes. My, my whole family is still here. So we, we definitely are invested in this town. It's great. Okay. What are the two or three most important actions you would take if elected? And how would you advance them and pay for them?
So the way I would answer that is first thing, a council member doesn't do anything by him or herself. It takes a group of, you know, council members to, to do that. So I would work with the rest of council and I would work with city staff to do it. Two or three things that I think are really pressing right now. One of them is related to what I'm going to call our small businesses, our smaller retail, our smaller restaurants. It is figuring out what, what is this, I will, I will call it a post-COVID world that we're going to come into. You could call it a post-economic downturn world. But what is this going to look like? What we've, we've had some impact, not only if we had some businesses hurt, I mean, cut back quite a bit. We've actually lost some businesses, right? There's gaps that have to be filled eventually. And unfortunately, some of those businesses won't, won't come back. So what does that environment look like? What do we need to do to help small businesses in particular? Get back on their feet or in the places where we have now gaps? How do we attract the right small businesses? And give, give them support to get started in this community? Now, the market will take care of a good bit of that, but there are, there, I think there are things the city can do. At a lot of a time, it just has to do with listening to what the small businesses, what are the pain points? What are the, what are the obstacles that have to happen? And the city taking those all into account as much as possible and deciding, what can we do? Can we, can we do something even little like, you know, some of the, the permitting that has to happen when renovations? And I know the city has actually done some of this through some of the, the crisis effort. But are there little things like that that we can continue to do? You know, a number of years, the sign ordinance came up. Well, it's come up a lot of times is what it actually, it's not just, just a few years ago, but, but reevaluating, are there things we can do to still protect how Capella looks and the feel of Capella? And, you know, making sure that the community continues to be what it needs to be. But at the same time, are there things we can do that, that lightens the load on small businesses as much as possible? Or are there things from an education standpoint that small businesses need? There are so many, you know, I'm sort of a, a numbers nerd, I guess. And so I don't always have that entrepreneur vision like some people do. So there are so many people who have great ideas and they have, they have a great product and they do great from a customer service, but maybe they don't have quite the business wherewithal to know how to, you know, how do you need to build, how do you build the infrastructure to support this great idea? And so maybe there, there are ways we can relook at education. And so when we talk about small businesses, a lot of these things have been done in the past. I just think this economic downturn is going to cause us to once again, take a step back and where we have lost focus on some of that, we may need to refocus again to, to help restart the Capella economy as much as possible. One of the other things, again, connected to the downturn is we have got to protect our AAA bond rating. And this is not just a cost of capital thing in the city. The AAA bond rating is a proxy for how well the city is, how, how good the city's financial position is. What they're, do they have the resources to take care of their obligations for the future of what, what they're doing now and what they're planning in the future? So it really is a barometer to, are you doing a good job in the city? We have to protect it, not just so we get, you know, cheaper bonds when it is time to go and issue bonds. But it, it, it tells, it tells us we're doing the right things. We, we have built up the right liquidity. We have built fund reserves to the point where when we have unforeseen problems, we have the cushion to weather those storms. And well, the other thing that's happened recently is, you know, our revenue, our revenue mix is changing because of some legislate, legislation that has come down, right? So between sales tax and property tax changes, not only did those things, those things were already changing before COVID and then they got delayed. And so you're just in this longer period of time where it's like, okay, how's this going to impact us? We think we know and we can sort of project and, but do we really know yet? And, but what our financial flexibility that's built into the triple A, AAA bond rating and our financial position is, we have some breathing room here to make the adjustments as, as, as they come at us. And then on top of that, you did, you then you did have COVID that hit you and you certainly didn't see that coming from anywhere, right? And so that just compounded the problem. So I, I just think it's paramount that we protect that AAA bond rating to just as a proof that we are doing things the right way. And we've got a third party telling us, yes, we think you're doing it the right way. In fact, there are very few cities that have that type of bond rating. We are, you just do not find them this size of community that has that. So it, it has got to be, it has to be protected. That's going to really, that's going to preserve what we have in this community for the long term. And then sort of the third thing I would say, because of the sales tax revenue shift that is going on and what does that mean? On the west side of town, we have a lot of commercial businesses that provide sales tax revenue, right? And that, that has been a benefit for us for over the time until they've decided to change the rules. So what does that mean? As, as businesses move out, because that, you know, from time, we try to retain almost all of our businesses as much as possible, but you know, you, you don't always do it. So when we have to attract new businesses in, as much as possible, can we attract the ones that are going to actually help with our sales tax revenue? And be supportive from, you know, support the city from that way, you know, the, 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 when we shift, when we lose revenue sources from the west side, well, it feeds into the residence, you know, in the residential areas, that tax burden sort of gets shifted over the other way. So we need to keep in mind, how do we, how do we keep the balance between commercial and residential tax burden sort of where we are, where we are today. So it really, you can't always perfectly target the businesses to get in here and you can't just pick and choose who's going to come here. But you can incent the right type of, you know, revenue sources for the cities as much as possible. So those are sort of the three things that I've really targeted as, as a focus in the near term. And that's really because, you know, we're at a time of resetting and, and, you know, economic downturns do that to people, right? It forces you to make new decisions and rethink how you've, how you've done things. So really taking care of small businesses and protecting that rating and, and, and focusing on when we do have to replace West Side businesses, what, what type of businesses do we need to get in here? Those are, those are the three things I would say we would focus on.
That's great. Those are, those are three great things to focus on. All right. Where does the development or redevelopment emphasis need to be in your community, residential or commercial? And how has Capella performed in this area? I know you touched a little bit on that, but let you expand.
Sure. You know, I'm gonna, is it, is it fair to say both, both categories? Because I, I think there is some redevelopment that needs to happen on both. In general, you know, we don't, we don't have a lot of new building going on. And that's not absolute. There is, there is some, but for the most part, we're approaching built out. So it really is shifting to redevelopment. And to be perfectly frank, in my years on economic development, I watched us as we shifted from, we were still going after new builds and we're still doing the development and tax incentives for new, you know, new, new people coming into, new companies coming into town. But over my ten years, I saw that starting to shift and there just wasn't as much of that. And so it's like, well, where, where do we need to focus? We need to focus on redevelopment. Which I think sometimes is a tougher deal to do, you know, when you got a bunch of space and you can just build a bunch of buildings and bring in a bunch of companies, that's the, that's sometimes easier to do than figuring out what makes a company stay here, you know, when, when it's time to, do we need to do some redevelopment? Do we need to incent them to stay here? You know, how, how do we keep them in, in Capella? So I think we've shifted to really needing to, to redevelop some of our aged buildings on the west side and, you know, making sure it's state of the art. And I say us making sure it is, the market takes care of most of that, right? But we can, we can foster an environment that makes that easier. You know, for, for the businesses and for the landlords to do. So I think there is a shift toward redevelopment on the commercial side. Now, on the residential side, I think because of aging housing stock, at least in some areas of town, I think we're at a point also where there's going to be some redevelopment there. That is one, you know, we, they have created the future oriented approach to Residential Development Board specifically to address that because we knew that was going to be an issue going forward. I, I even questioned, I love the way Capella looks and feels and the single family home setup. And so much of that needs to be preserved. I do think looking to the future, we may need to consider what are some alternative types of housing that might work. And I know at times mixed use is a bad word, you know, in certain areas, but I don't think it's bad to consider things like that. Now they have to be, we have to be selective about where that goes. Does it fit into the overall vision of the community? But if we're looking to the future as, as things are shifting, we need to be at least have, have those discussions before. The worst thing in the world is when the future is coming at you and you don't take action or you don't make at least some adjustment to it. And next thing you know, the future's been built around you. It hasn't been built here. It's been built near you, but not here. And you don't want opportunities to completely slip away. And that doesn't mean you have to change the way Capella is or the way Capella looks, but you at least have to recognize that that is what's going on around you. So how does that need, how does that need to happen? What does it look like? Once again, the market, you know, the market takes care of a lot of that redevelopment. Redevelopment happens when home value and land value price, prices decline. We're not seeing that at this point. So I don't, you know, the timing of when redevelopment happens, sometimes is delayed for market reasons. You know, even on the commercial side, we have probably some buildings in town that could be redeveloped or could look differently, but rents continue to be high. And, you know, why would you rebuild something if they continue to demand to rent? But that won't always be the case. I mean, eventually we will get to a point where things do have to be redeveloped. So we have to be prepared for that. The vision, the 2040 vision plan, I think, does a good job, you know, setting out guardrails for us at least. I mean, it's not, it's not the, the gospel and it's, that's not the way it has to be. But at least gives us guardrails for the future. That way, when the opportunities to redevelop residential and commercial come, we at least have an idea of what we want this to look like or what it needs to be.
Great. Perfect. Okay. Does Capella deliver services in the most cost-effective manner? Please be specific about improvements you would advocate.
So the way I answer that is I believe for the most part, Capella does a good job at this. Here's what happens though, over time, you go through, this happens with companies, it probably happens with household budgets, but you go through a time of strong revenues, you go through a time of expansion, you go through a time of building. And what ends up happening is you do get some expense creep that goes on. And oftentimes it's not malicious how that happens. It's not people spending, you know, trying to go out there and, and sprint, spend freely, but just over time, as you bolt on additional projects and bolt on a different additional amenities, expense creep is going to happen. But the way the economy works and what history tells us, as these moments of economic downturn are always prime times where you have to take a step back and reevaluate, what is our expense structure? And can we, can we do as good a job spending less money? And how do we do things more efficiently? Even, even through some of this COVID stuff, I would say the, 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 the city has done a good job of reevaluating how they deliver services, right? And clearly a lot of that has been remotely. Well, how much of that is probably going to continue into our future also is it's going to be remotely and it's going to be alternative ways to deliver city services. And at times it may be more cost-effective ways to, to do it. And it, it sometimes it takes moments like this to challenge you to really rethink this. And I, I think that's, we're at a moment like that. So while I think in general, Capella does a good job and the way they deliver services and doing it as cost effectively as, as they can, I think this is a point in time when we can reevaluate that. And I think the city has started doing that. I think they spent, they spent a lot, a good bit of last year reevaluating what is in the budget that we can, I say do without or do with less of. And I think they trimmed nine or 10 million dollars out of the budget to, to address tax revenue changes and then COVID. I mean, so you, you already had some of this going on. And, and I think they've done a pretty good job doing that. We will just need to continue doing that as we, you know, as reality of sales tax in particular comes at us, what, what does this really mean? Are we really going to lose sixty percent of our sales tax revenue in this community? And you can plan for that. And I'm hoping it's a lot less than that, but you know, are we prepared to, to cut back on what we're doing? And I don't mean cut back on necessarily on amenities as much as possible, but cut back on how we deliver those amenities. One of the other, one of the other things that is a possibility in, in this process is are some of the amenities, are some of the value-added things that we have in Capella? Maybe they do need to become more self-funded in some ways, you know, that's, that's finding a, you'd still delivering the amenities and still delivering the services, but you're doing it, you're just funding it slightly different, right? And maybe they are more self-funded and they're more, you know, you know, sort of pay for service or fee for service type idea. And so what, that may be one of the alternatives depending on what our revenue is. One of the things that's really crucial, I'm going to go back once again, I'm going to sort of, you know, beat this drum is protecting that bond rating and protecting the financial position of this community. I, I think we're in a good position as far as tax rate goes. And I think we're, I mean, I, I, there, there isn't a reason that we should be raising taxes if, if at all possible. So we got to find alternative ways to, to fill whatever gaps we have. And so, you know, potentially more self-funded opportunities may be how, how we accomplish that. So, so to summarize it all up, it's all has to be a balance. I think they do a good job. Nobody can ever say we, we do a perfect job. There's always room for improvement and we always, that's one thing, even when I talk to, when I talk to city staff and when I talk to other people connected to the city, I think they have a great attitude from the top down of, they hear what citizens say and some, and you know, at times you, you know, you have to make decisions for the good of all of Capella, but oftentimes city staff takes a step back and says, are there, is there a way we can rethink this? Is there a way we can deliver this differently? That feedback that was given to us is valid feedback and, and we need to reevaluate how we're doing things. And I, so I, and I think the city will continue to do that. And, and going forward, I think we're going to, you know, we'll be forced to, to, to go through and see how cost effective can we deliver the, the same great services that we've enjoyed all this time.
Yes, there are a lot of, a lot of changes coming up soon. A lot of things, a lot of things going on. Okay. And kind of going off of what you were talking about with the city staff and the way things are handled there, please rate the transparency of the decision-making in Capella.
Yeah, the, I know this can be a hot potato at times, this topic. I think the city does a pretty good job with transparency. I think there's always room for improvement. I think communication with citizens and, and small businesses and our West Side businesses can all be improved. Sometimes that's a resource constraint. I mean, you, you still, I mean, you, you still have to be able to do it most effectively. And, you know, sometimes that does mean there are, there are gaps in communication, but I, I, I want to go first to the intent of city staff. I think the city staff does a great job of wanting to be as transparent as possible. I would even say through this election process and dealing with the city secretary's office and, and, and other city staff that I visited with, they really do strive to be as fair and as transparent as they can with everybody. And they try to be as forthcoming as possible. Sometimes the reality of things are you do have to have a succinct message when it is time to deliver a message to the community. You can't have eight different messages out there that aren't fully baked, you know, so you do have to have, I, I don't want to call it control on the message, but it is sort of a, you have to, it has to be the right message. Otherwise you've got all kinds of chaos. Even in the corporate world, you see that, that same thing happen is you can't let them, you can't get a half-baked message out there early. You have to make sure we are all on the same page, you know, and at times even let, talk about city staff or council members or anything else. We may not always agree with what the message is, but we got to at least be all, all on the same page of what the message is. Because otherwise you just cause all kinds of confusion in the, in the city. So I do, I really do think their intent is always to be as transparent as possible. Communication styles, I, I will tell you for human beings in general, communication is one of our biggest challenges. And I, that could, that means with your spouse and with your kids and with your employer and with your neighbors. I mean, communication, usually you can, anytime there's a breakdown in relationships, almost always you can point to somehow something wasn't communicated right. And I think that's true with, with the city, that the, the best intention sometimes just communication breaks down. It's not complete. And so I think we can always try to improve that as much as possible, using technology to get more and more methods of communication out there. I, I actually think that's a little bit of a double-edged sword because you can get information overload, you can get, you don't know where to go to get the information because it's in so many places. Am I getting the same message in all these different places? So making, making sure those are all synchronized can be difficult from a city standpoint. But I do think that we have more access because of technology these days than we probably ever have before. Even little things, I know the city council meetings have been on video and on Zoom for, not on Zoom, but on video for a long, a long time. But even with this pandemic where they opened it up where it's just two-way, potential to have two-way communication with city council, but do it remotely. I think little things like that are going to improve, you know, improve transparency and improve communication with the city over time. Because I think some of those things are going to stay. I don't think the remote and the virtual ever fully replaces in-person interaction because I think humans just need to be in person. But I certainly think it can supplement, you know, opportunity for, for individuals to be more engaged than they were previously and it to be a two-way dialogue. So I think some of those things are going to continue. A lot of the other remote offerings to the city, I think, are going to, you know, continue after, after all this sort of subsides and, and I think that'll improve transparency, but it is something we're always going to have to look to and see how we can improve it, how we can be more transparent, at the same time, getting the right message out there that's going to serve all the citizens.
Getting everybody together in the right same message.
Yes, yes. It's like stomping an anthill sometimes, you know, so.
Well, great. Don, I wanted to give you this opportunity to speak to the viewers who are learning a little more about you. Going to give you some closing remarks. If there was anything that we missed or that you wanted to make sure that you got your message out, now's your time.
Well, I appreciate it. And I, I just appreciate, I just, Tiana and I love living in this community. Well, I appreciate it and I I just appreciate, I just, Tiana and I love living in this community. We just, we have, we we moved here, uh, you know, fourteen years ago. Quite frankly, not knowing what we were getting into. I mean, we knew it was a nice area, but we didn't really know all that much about Capel. And we have just fallen in love with our neighborhood and our schools. And it's really, I mean, it really has taken off since the girls are now in all in school and everything and getting to know the community even more from that standpoint. I I was talking to somebody the other day, just randomly out of the blue over in Dallas. He knew I was from Capel, but he didn't really know much about Capel. And the first thing he said is, he said, you know, the Capel ought to be known as the city of parks because you only go, you know, you drive every two or three blocks and there's another park and there's another park. And I thought, I'm I'm afraid we take some of this for granted sometimes of what we have in Capel because that is a person unrelated to this community and that's the thing that stood out. So we have immunities and we amenities that that are a little bit different than a lot of other areas. And we have a great school district. Um, but all that comes with planning. Uh, and and, you know, I I want, I love this place, I want my girls to love this place. But for this to be uh the same place or or a an equally uh wonderful place to live in the future, we we have to plan now. And we have to do it with a a strong look to, you know, looking at things conservatively from a fiscal standpoint. We we have been blessed with resources in this community and we have to protect those resources. Uh, and so uh my my experience with the city, spending many, many years understanding more and more how the city works and how it makes decisions and what uh what the city, what the city even wants, coupled with my professional expertise uh in financial analysis and in banking and just understanding, how do you protect? Uh, how do you protect that that fortress fa- financial position uh to make sure we have flexibility for the unforeseen things in the future? I I really, uh, I think those those qualities and those squi- skills really prepare me to 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 take the next step on on city council. So um, that's, that's a little bit of my pitch is I I love it, I want to be a part of it. Uh, and I think I can continue to continue to help it. Uh, I love hearing from different citizens, even when I don't always agree with, you know, the other positions. I love hearing it because if you're in an echo chamber and you're only hearing what you like, you're not serving, you're not serving the city well. Uh, you know, and you you have to, you have to be open to what other viewpoints are and what other experiences are. And so uh I I think continuing to listen to the citizens is really going to prepare us for the future.
Absolutely. Well, as a citizen, I agree. Uh, I love that. Well, thank you, Don Carroll, running for place three. All right, well, we appreciate you being here, Don. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.